She told us.
Okay, I got the live on. It works. But I'm gonna be.
Order.
At five thirty. You ready to start?
I'm ready. You? I'll wait till you.
Load up my plate?
Yeah.
Jody won't be here tonight, just for everybody who remember. He missed Tony? Did he mention that he was gonna be here and us, or?
I just found out that Jody wasn't gonna be here, so.
She had mentioned that at the last meeting before.
Yeah, I didn't. We have a lot, we have stuff that she's gonna sign tomorrow. But I ain't heard anything from Tony. All right, I'll get started, just because I wanna, I don't have time for a lot of discussion, if you have it. First and foremost, we want to say thank you to two individuals that have served our board. First, Sally Standard. She has served two terms in the School District of Glenwood City Board. And the most recent as a treasurer. So, again, I wanna say thank you for her commitment to our students or staff and our community as a whole. We also have Kerry Clatt, who was appointed last August to fill a vacancy. And, yeah. I think we all know that these are positions that take a lot more time and effort than most are aware of. So, I wanted to publicly say thank you to you two for everything that you have done. If you wanna change, sure, we can. We're gonna send this out publicly, so if you have some preference, just let us know.
Do I need to proofread that one? Maybe you put that one up?
Which one? Oh.
So, I wanted to say thank you to the two of you as the April election comes up, so. All right, we're gonna jump right into the budget. And one and two, I have a prize. So, as you can see, we have a new configuration of the boardroom. The two screens will have the agenda up on one. And the camera is attached to that. So Krista is running that. So the left side is Krista, the right side is myself. And so, instead of saying, hey, can you click on this? Can you click on this? I can actually run it and I'll show you my presentations, etc. We put people, we surprised the Tribune as she walked in, instead of walking through. So the setup is different. Plus, for the board members, all seven of you are facing the screen. But again, the camera is a go above that and everything is being streamed as normal. Just a reminder too, Steve did look through the financial survey coming in. Tony was the other one. And I'll make sure we have the board members that we get the, at least the schedule out. But please don't forget to do that before. And you can always do it ahead of time. Deb is gonna be here. I'm gonna not have her come unless we talk fiscally, which will be coming. But please don't forget to do the survey as we go. All right, if you look at the budget, there's a couple things that I really wanna go to. This is a very, I would say, evident topic even in public, so please ask questions. This was a meeting that I had prior to spring break. And we met with the legislators from our area. Everyone from Senator Rob Statchold to Senator Quinn, who I've worked with closely in Bray Farm into Richmond. We also had Congressman Tiffany's aide. And then a variety of assemblymen, assemblywomen. And some other constituents, some other advisors to these congresspeople. With that, this is kind of the summary that outlines, give the board a pretty direct understanding of where we are with the budget. First and foremost, our budget is still in the learning stage. Last year, we underspent by a million. And when you change the budget, we have to kind of let this budget play out before we can make some other changes. But a lot of changes, as you know, were made. One of the things that seems to come up quite a bit, and we had a lengthy discussion. We actually met for about two hours, so I kinda highlighted some of the pieces and I'll come back to it. The federal impact. Best one is probably the, at the center point of social media, also at the state level. Deb was not on spring break last week. She was actually at the WASCO convention and learning some different things. This was a presentation, both at hers and mine. You're often gonna get the question of, if the Department of Ed closes, what does that mean for Glenwood City? This graphic will show you that answer. And what that means is, this is a DPI graphic. And with this, obviously, the amount is five oh seven. It breaks it down into more. I would be cautious when it says three educator jobs. They're just trying to put a number in terms of what that would mean budget-wise. They don't know what ours is, because positions are at different salaries. But with that said, would it affect? And I think the takeaway for you as a board member, if you're approached in the community, is one billion dollars is what the effect of the national budget, or the federal budget in terms of Wisconsin, and who's gonna pick that up? I have been told that there was mixed messages at the meeting. And it was this one. What would it take to close the Department of Education? There was a couple that stated it would take an act of Congress. And then there was others that said it's just not gonna happen. That was kind of a confusing piece to where we looked at each other as superintendents, like, what is it? Rob Statchold and Senator Quinn are both on the JFC meetings. And I have attended every JFC when I've since been a superintendent to talk and speak. These are the joint finance committees that will go around the state. There's typically four of them. The closest one, I believe, this year, according to Senator Statchold, is gonna be in Hayward. The dates haven't been chosen. But they said it's very unlikely that there will be a budget prior to July one, which is not out of the norm. But as you know, there's a lot of, a lot of political back and forth right now. And a lot of it centers on Governor Evers last year and the veto line. And what he, how he extended it to four hundred years, if you remember that piece. Right now, because of where we are at the federal level, there's a lot of Supreme Court and federal government litigation that's going on. That's also going to tie it up. They advised us to use three twenty-five. And that is the increase that, again, was put in place. And then Governor Evers used his line item veto to extend it to four hundred and some years. And there's some bickering going on with that. If we're not approved, and Deb and I are meeting with Baird and we're going through. So next month, I will have all the Baird projections for you. And we'll have more details. But they basically use this comment, plan for the worst, hope for the best. And it's not a great statement when you're sitting there, you know, talking about how to be planning. Senator Statchold and I, I think it was probably four years ago, we talked. He actually was gonna create a bill that outlined, because those of you that are in business, you would never run a business this way, where you, you plan and then you get your budget later on. And so, they were talking about a kind of a two-year cycle, not looking at binding a budget, but just truly, can schools plan, you know? So for each year, it's not wait and see. But unfortunately, I think we're looking at, we won't have preliminary numbers in July one. We won't have a state budget. We won't have true final numbers till probably well past, yeah, till the fifteenth date. So this year's upcoming budget is not only where we were, I would say, you have unique circumstances anyway, based on the situation, best even couples it more. So I'll talk a little bit more on that. They looked at this decoupling. And this is a term that I would encourage you to make sure that you're aware, because this is the topic that comes up with senators. What does that mean? If you go into this presentation, the WASCO voucher presentation, there's two individuals that are up for the state senator education position. And Wisconsin's one of the few that have that as an elected official still. Usually, it's appointed in most other states. There's two clear indications between the two applicants. One is Jill Ungerle, who is the incumbent and was a teacher, principal, superintendent. And then there's, Ms. Kinzer is another individual running. And she has been very, I would say, upfront when it comes to the vouchers system. And I think, again, as a board for a public school, you have to understand the ramifications of what that affects. Currently, for Glenwood, we're right around eleven, or ten-five, which we pay, our current taxes pay. We don't have any public or private schools in Glenwood or in our area that's still. And again, it's not a big amount, but it's still, that's one student per second that goes elsewhere. Privatization is a topic, a political topic, that again, my job is to make sure you guys have all the information and how that. This was at the WASCO conference and they presented this. And I think one thing that sticks out as you look through this is some of the voucher programs surpassed what was given to special education in the state. And we spent about forty-five minutes with the state legislators talking about what is special education reimbursement. What does that look like? How does that affect? Because currently, we're right around, I think it's twenty-seven and a half. There's talk of sixty, which I don't think is reasonable, because that's billions of dollars. But if, we talked about it at our admin today, their students, and we don't know the number here. I can tell you, in my previous district, we knew exactly what it would cost every, to educate every student in Glenwood, or in New Richmond. We get eleven thousand, as you know, with the higher revenue count. But we might run down. And as we get our budget going in years, we'll know that. You have to understand, though, too, that we have students that are, have special education needs that they might cost fifty-five thousand. So if you look at this line, because again, this is another number that I want you guys to be prepared in the public. Glenwood City, so we don't, Fund Twenty-seven is special education. Have you guys in the past talked about how much Fund Ten covers extra instead? Have you guys ever talked about that? Okay, so basically, we got to transfer eight hundred and forty-six thousand from Fund Ten just to cover Fund Twenty-seven. And that's typical of every district, because it's not an even swap. Because you add in transportation, you add in parent support, you add in all these things. So when we talk about the budget, and we had to actually outline this to legislators, like, what are you talking about? Why are students cost more? Why is the reimbursement such a big deal? Well, that's where the Fed piece comes in. So there's a lot of moving parts to this budget. And we were already talking about a operated referendum. This just compounds that. Because we don't know where this is gonna come in, if it's truly gonna be us being short. If the state doesn't pick up that one billion, it's gonna be passed on to local taxpayers. That's just the given of how this is gonna work. So, again, I wanted to outline all of these pieces. There's a, the website is right here, in terms of tracking, like, if your district, this is what? And it's eight, I said a billion, but I rounded, it's eight hundred and forty-one billion. And this is talking about what it does. And this is a DPI website. In terms of this, again, I want you guys to be prepared in terms of, if you get asked in the public, if the Department of Ed goes down or closed, what does that mean for local districts? Because that's a question that I get quite often. And then, I just, for staff wages and so on, CPI is at two point nine five. So there's a variety of inputs there. And I just wanna open it up to you in terms of, what does this look like? What questions may you be getting outside of, in the public that I can help you answer?
The whole voucher, the decoupling thing, that is something I, I need to educate myself on more. Like you said, I just can't wrap my head around how that even got. You know?
Yep. So I guess I don't have any general questions about it. I just need to find a resource and read it and figure it out.
So this is the slide that I put in there from the WASCO presentation. Because that's a good question. Because even decoupling, I had the legislator explain it to me. Because I said, from your perspective, you tell me what your definition is. And this was Senator Quinn. And this was Senator Quinn. So this is where again, it would move the cost of the voucher to independent charter schools for programs and basically pass it on to our local taxpayers. So we talked, no rate we talked, I mean, the money's got to come somewhere. And it's like, okay, where does that come from? And again, I came back to the question of, does it take an act of Congress to shut? So I don't think that's a topic. I think the Department of Ed is going to be there, because there's so many other things that are in there. I think what I'm waiting to see as, as superintendents, what we're waiting to see is where are those federal funds? Is that, because they're going to say more local control, state control, which is great. Fighting for that all the time. But the money's got to come from somewhere. And if the state doesn't pick it up, guess what? The local people are going to take it. So that's, that's the concern I have is, you know, when you look at this infographic right here. When it talks about how is this federal, so we're talking school meals. We are talking special education. We're talking about poverty programs such as after-school programs. We're talking about mental health and then some professional learning. So again, this is not an info that graphic that I made. This is from the state, because they're the ones that are the middle person in terms of where these federal funds come from. So to Chuck's point, you know, decoupling, and I had to do the same, is just understand it more. But I think this slide right, sorry. This Wasco presentation kind of helped me understand.
What is, so what is coupled now? What are we decoupling? What are they proposing?
They're, they're basically, from what I gathered, the decoupling is taking, you know how oftentimes in the past, you guys have had discussion, I'm sure you've had discussions and then we have, where you, you want local control? Just leave it up to the local school board. They know what's best for the community. Right now, the United States federal government is overseeing this Department of Ed. And so they want to decouple that and just put it all on the state. And say, okay, state, you, you take it. These are your responsibilities. You need to come up with funds for after-school programs. You need to come up with funds for food service. You need to come up with funds for special education. Well, I think we know, and again, I, I don't, the political side, so please don't take any of my comments from a political standard, stands, or idea. Okay, individual plans that are developed with our students. The Secretary of Education didn't even know what that even meant. But those have always been, because it's a federal law. So that's where it was coupled, because it was a federal law coming down to the state law. And that's where it was coupled together. Now they're just trying to say, education, you know, Wisconsin, you take care of yours. Minnesota, you take care of yours. And so, so again, that's where I put the senators kind of on check to say, like, in your mind, because Rob and Quinn, they're going to be deciding for us, you know, what that may look like. So I, I was curious to know what their definition was. Any other questions?
And this, we won't ever, we won't know any of this for a while. And that's the hard part. So what can we do as a group? Do a kind of hedge bets, I guess? How do we, how do we make sure that we don't get completely blindsided if this goes into effect? And how do we do it without hurting our current situation?
It's a great question, Tony. I, I don't know. One of the things, you know, and one, the board, because we have seats up obviously, but one of the questions that I always have on a yearly basis to a new board is, how political do you want to get? Do you want to get to where you, you know, write resolutions? And then I pass those resolutions on to state legislators and so on. I've had boards, most of the time, they just like, let's stay out of the political realm, just because, you know, is it do anything? Sure. But that's where the resolutions come in and say, okay, the Glenwood City Board of Education, you know, are disappointed. And then they make a statement, that type of thing, and then we pass it on to, so people know. In this situation, there's just so many moving parts where contacting your legislator, talking to them, understanding. I think what you, my job is to make sure you guys are not surprised out of the community. You need to be aware that if the Department of Ed reduces their overall budget to the degree that they're talking about, it could easily be deflected upon local taxpayers. And the, the state might pass it, even though that there's a surplus right now. So if you have a discussion with Rob Stachold or Senator Quinn, it's talking about those pieces to say, you're on the budget finance committee. We local taxpayers can't afford this, because our bill rates will skyrocket. And it's going to happen to every school. And we're going to be in the same situation. But like I said, it, there's a lot of, of moving parts. You know, two months ago, I was talking about adding a possible another elementary position. There's, there's no way that I can do that. I mean, we have, the, the non-renewal process has to happen before May first. We're not going to be there. So what makes this even harder for Glenwood is that because of all the other stuff going on, we're living a budget that I wish we had better planning in terms of previous, because under spending by a million, like, how do you get to that point? And so we're going to use fund balance and that type of thing.
It's unproven, essentially.
It is, it is. And that's why I've, I've put requirements on all, basically all staff. These three get a little exception, but in terms of we're to have everything in the system by April fourteen. So then we can actually look and make sure from an auditing standpoint, but also budget. Yep, we made this line change, this worked out. We don't want all those pockets that existed before. We want a true budget. Where does that mean for others? Again, I, I don't know. I just wish they would have answered the question, you know, in terms of decoupling. Is it an act of Congress? What does it look like for state funding? And we just, time's not on our side.
So if we do get into a little bit of a snap, let's say, are we going to have some sort of, I know we don't want a lot of pockets like we had before, but are we going to have some sort of pocket where you can draw from?
Well, that's, so fund balances are typical. So here in Glenwood, Paul's current policy states, and I'm going to ask the board to narrow that down. Right now, Glenwood City is at fifteen to twenty-five percent. That's basically two, three months of just typical payroll, accounts payable and so on. Just in case, we're at well over thirty percent, because we underspent by a million. And so we do have funds, you know, to where that can happen. And use, and that's what the purpose is of it. It's not good practice, but based on where we're at. And that's why, yeah, I, I just, i- it's hard to explain to the public, you know, without going back and talking about past mistakes. Because that's true why we're in this position. And so we do have some flexibility with fund balance, but it's not years' worth. But I think it's enough to where we can get by. And then make a decision based on, and again, if this, depending on what that number is, five hundred thousand, you know, whatever it may be, I think we can easily get by. But every school district is going to be hurting, same old, to some degree, yeah. I mean, right now, last meeting I shared with you how many districts are going to just operate a referendum to make things. And even the senators, there's a, there's a problem. The formula is not working. Local taxpayers are going to be asked, you know, year, year after year about referendums. And that's what schools are using. Glenwood hasn't had to go down that road since two thousand sixteen, which was more of a bomb issue. I don't know the last time you guys did an operation.
I don't ever remember.
We've never had an operation. We've done bonds to get us over, but then once we got our, was our whole headway working? Back to here, we never had a bond.
The problem is, is that again, I don't mean to beat a drum, but, you know, just last year, we spent close to nine hundred thousand just to get our building up to keep up this. You know, when you, when you, when you have those type of expenditures, how do you budget?
Hopefully they don't go that far down the road again.
No.
Again, so I think we're, we're moving in the right direction at least, so.
So there's a lot of information there. Do you guys have any questions when it comes to the, the budget itself? I'll have more kind of a preliminary budget, but again, it's still very difficult to do that, just based on the other circumstances we're working through. Okay. Don't be afraid. If you get approached in the community, just shoot me a text and I would be happy to give you the literature or answer the question, or at least find the answer. I don't know long at any degree, but more than happy to, to share. Okay, I asked the board to look through, this is a very, I did print out, because I didn't want to kill a bunch of trees, but the document is there. This is the, I would say, outline in terms of where we've gotten. We're trying to just put a kind of a finite factor and moving on to newer, brighter things. This is something I was able to accomplish with my team. We just have been delayed on trying to get, I do want to point out, thanks to these ladies to my left and Krista and Darla and all of staff. This is something that I wish I would have, I, I expected to be here a year ago. But we weren't, based on a variety of things. With that, this is the starting point. And there's a couple components that I'm going to ask the board for feedback and then also how to proceed. If you look at an overall strategic plan, this is something that is for planning purposes. Puts some, I would say poignant direction in terms of what we're trying to accomplish, how rich to accomplish it, and what resources do we have at our disposal. And so I wanted to give it to you early enough. I'm just going to explain what each kind of outline is and then open it to questions. The strategic direction was us as administrators sitting down. This is something that if you break a school district down and you come up with any topic, this, it basically would fall under one of these categories. And so that's kind of the strategic direction in terms of what we're trying to accomplish. And we as a board have gone through this also. The values we've talked about, the commitment and accountability, I'm going to ask the board tonight in terms of how we get to that part. This second part of the presentation is truly, and actually the purpose of this is to understand, I, I've sat in this chair saying the things that we've kind of dealt with in the last year and a half are not normal. And I will continue to say that, and I think it's important for everyone, which will go out in our spring newsletter of how did we get to this point? What's, what changes? Because that's the question I often get, based on what happened and where we're at right now. Later in the meeting, I am going to ask for board approval when it comes to this annual performance survey. This is a survey that in my experiences has really added to a true reflection process. It's an understanding of where the public thinks we are. There's an old adage that perception is reality. And we live in a time where social media, et cetera. But we need to hear from people. We need to hear from our students. We need to hear from our staff. We need to hear from the public on these types of things. It's based on the Likert scale, a four system Likert scale. So there's no real gray areas. But then again, the questions are there and we're looking for feedback, just to get a true baseline. And so the questions are there and we'll have more discussion. I'll come back to that. These are things that you think about the last year and a half. What are, have we made some changes to? Because that is the question I get quite a bit in terms of, have you made changes to this? This came up in audit, or this came up, what, what steps have you been taking? Here it is. If you outline and look, this is a combination of, I would say, all of the, the changes, successes. And again, this list could be put together without the, the administration team that has worked tirelessly to get us to this point. You can go through, I'm not going to read through each one of them, but if you look through, and this is an updated list. And years ago, I, I learned from one of my board presidents, he asked me to do something like this. And it was helpful, because it was putting pen to paper in terms of what are some of the changes? Instead of people relying on school districts, like, these are the facts. It's a little bit overwhelming to see that the two columns that are probably the, the most lengthy are the facilities and budget, but I think we understand why we're, we're at that point. Our focus moving forward is taking these last three columns and really start to focus on what can you do to drive these key points? If you look at the right column, Frank has done a tremendous job. He is, we're very fortunate to have Frank and the changes that he's made from a technology standpoint. We feel very confident, just things that he has provided in terms of efficiency and ways to not only cut costs, but more so providing the tools that our students and staff need in an efficient manner. And he does a great job. So that's what this part is. And then it always comes down to this part, the accountability. Okay, you say you're going to do these things. Let's not just be a poster material. Let's talk about how we're actually going to find and get to the point of success with these. And where is that really at? And so these are some priorities that we're constantly having as administrators and saying, okay, we need to run this. Again, this, all this is, is a starting point. This is not, hey, this is our strategic plan. We will have open sessions where I will sit in front of the public and get the feedback. We'll have surveys, we'll have the option for parents, community members, staff. Each PLD, I talk with our staff at the start, just to again, update them, but also have some of these discussions and we're answering the questions. So there's a long process in terms of how you get in, to implement a strategic plan. This is truly just the beginning stages. And it's the framework to work off of. And then from here, it's truly what those discussions may look like. The last part here is a video that Krista's been working on. I think we talked about as a priority for our district is starting to turn the open enrollment financial, I would say, not, we need to flip it. We have currently hundred and sixty students going out. Lose that number. And then sixty coming in. And we want to flip that, because that's right around eight hundred thousand for our district. Ways that we have to do that is marketing. Ways that we have to do this is really showcasing what great things we have in our district. So people understand, these are the changes that have been made. Why would you want to come here and bring this? So this is the draft and this is, I put the link there, you can see it. Krista's done a nice job of what this looks like in a, a video. Again, just showcasing how Uh, again, just showcasing how, uh, Cleveland could be the place for their students. So, um, that's kind of an overview of what this document is. Right now, I'm just going to, I asked you if you would, um, again, go through it and give me feedback, uh, responses, comments, concerns, anything. And again, this is just, uh, a, a starting framework. This is not the plan itself.
The Likerts scale?
Uh, so when you, uh, go through a survey, you can put, you know, you grade it from four, three, two, one. So we're go, we're like, I, um, agree, I disagree, you know, that's a two-point Likert scale.
Okay, so.
So the Likert scale will, and I have it, um, outlined, um, but it would be a highly disagree, disagree, highly agree.
Some would agree.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So, just, I, I've learned over the years, I had a, a three Likert scale and people just go right down the middle. And so the four Likert scale breaks it off a little bit more to just say, okay, you can, don't just put it in the middle. Try to give us more information. You guys look through this, is there anything that popped out that you guys have questions on that you want clarification, comments on any of the things that have been accomplished?
I'm, I'm, we have strategic values here, um, excellence, respect, integrity, learning, passion, diversity, collaboration. How did we come up with those? Where did those come from, I guess is a better? I'm not disagreeing with any of them, I'm just wondering what they do.
Um, we sat, I don't know, when we first, we hired Jim and we sat through, uh, July and we actually met as a team and just started to framework this and talked about the values that we feel important. Um, I think for me, and I'll let them answer, it comes down to when you want, you, when your son or daughter walks across that stage and gets their diploma, what are some of the things that you wanna make sure that they have learned in their time here? And I think that's, was part of our discussion, but I don't know, ladies, if you have anything else to add?
Yeah. I think what we've done is look for the aims and even the rest of the goals and one of those great overarching.
Is there, and I didn't, I didn't look at it in full detail, um, but is there like a timeline included? As far, because you, you put that this is a five-year plan and beyond. Is, is there a like, by year one, we're going to do that, by year two?
Would that will be part of the, the final plan? That, that's the part where I don't want people to think that, hey, you know, the board did the strategic plan. This is our plan. This is not where, you know, I'm sitting in my office, admin team, board, and saying, here's our plan. This is where I have public meetings, people come. Um, unfortunately, there's been a variety that I've held over the years and I get one person, one board member. Um, the, the, the performance survey, we've had, um, I would say, if you look at some of the H R data that's out there, and I don't know what you mean, but if you can get five percent response on a survey, that's actually probably standard. Um, we often got ten percent of our district, uh, to respond, which isn't great, but at least it's above standard. And so that was great feedback to sit there and say, the public meetings, people just, you know, ah, I don't wanna go out, just do a survey. And then from there, we start talking about what do these look like, what is that timetable, what is that facility plan? Um, I think one of the, uh, one of the mistakes that I made in the past was you put, uh, you put an miracle value on a strategic plan. Isn't a strategic plan where you, you address it and you improve each year? So they say, hey, well, we'll address this five years, you know, it's gonna expire. It's not, so when I say it's five years and beyond, it's not a five-year strategic plan. This is a, an ongoing strategic plan for Cleveland City because we're gonna be throwing curveballs. We're being thrown curveball right now with the federal government. So we have to be prepared for those things. So I don't like to put a year, you know, I know I have it right here as a graphic, but it's not a, a ten-year plan. Uh, the one thing that I still keep a miracle value on is the capital piece. Like, we have to replace our parking lot in the next four years. And here's what it's gonna cost. So that's kind of, and like I said.
Yeah.
There's a timeline that's gonna be determined by the board, I mean, by everybody, the board, students, staff, families. What, what do we wanna accomplish by this day?
I think, Carrie, this document, you know, it talks about, because I think what the, some of us remember sitting with, um, I don't know, sitting with our company, they were contracted and they talked about facilities and how in our five-year plan and our ten-year plan and what things that we have to, to address and what facilities we're seeing right now. This really speaks to where, I think, where we're at, um, working on those values that we identified. This is, this is speaking to those things when, when we all sat together and talked about excellence and respect and those things that we value, the work for the students and staff. This is as much a highlight of, of what we've accomplished thus far as it is a totality of pain, I think.
Right. And I, and I am one hundred percent for this. This is, it's great. I love it. I'm just from, you know, and I, I've been involved in strategic plans on the business side. I'm thinking more of as somebody who doesn't understand what a strategic plan is and what it does and why it's there. How, how does an average parent, taxpayer, citizen, how do they look at this and say, well, what does this mean and why is it important? That, that's what I'm wondering. If, if there are some pieces in there, you know, this is, this is great, like, it, like a mission, you know, it, it, a mission statement is great, as long as you follow, you know, but I, I, I want it, if you're gonna put the work and the time and the effort into doing this because they are huge, it should have some meaning and it, and it should, it should have measurability. The, and that's what I, I'm not saying, you know, is that the strategic plans I've worked on have had specific timelines, not that this has too, but.
No, and I think to that, so if you look at this brochure and we're gonna get to this point, but if you were a new student in New Richmond, this is what we handed you. And this is what we basically updated every year. So if you wanna know what New Richmond was about, this is what we gave you. Now, the accountability that you're talking about in the document here, exactly, you know, where is the accountability? I love it when I see, uh, school districts, businesses and so on, they have, you know, they have this mantra, they have this mission. And you know damn well that they don't follow it. They don't, it's just a poster material. So where does the survey, so let's put some teeth to this. Let's do a survey. Now, they're gonna bash me, they're going to come up with different things and say, you didn't do this right, you didn't do this right, this decision was terrible. That's okay. That's my job, because that's a reflective piece where I wanna say, okay, um, at least I know how people are feeling. And so the teeth to that, now that also goes to the goals. And when we reach those goals, so at the end of the year, I'm gonna give you a packet and say, okay, with our math reading and our character goals this year, how did we do? Did we come up short? Did we reach our goals? Um, I, I, this can't just be a piece of paper.
Right.
Like you said. And so, um, the survey, I think, is the biggest item, which is why I have it in the business section tonight, is to say, okay, we're gonna put our money where our mouth is in terms of, let's, we're gonna get some feedback.
Well, and, you know, and that, that's going to help with the open enrollment piece as well. Like, look at how far we've come and how much more we're doing and going with this maybe something we need to look at. Maybe you weren't before or you turned it, turned away because of this reason. Come, come back and take another look.
If you look at these statements right here, that are inside right here, these are kind of the benchmarks of where we'll wanna be, you know. And, and we have to, you know, do, how do you quantify them?
Oh, yes, yeah.
Budget-wise, yep, we could quantify that. Yep. Patrick, the, the district didn't come to budget. We always spent in this area. So that's an easy one. With the facility, it's our, uh, five-year, ten-year facility plan. Did we accomplish this? Did we not? Didn't we come up short because we didn't have enough money to do roof deep? You know, the others, if you look at the data, um, the parents and community, that's pretty easy, that's the survey. So there, there is an accountability to each one of these columns to say, okay, here's the plan, here's the accountability. How are we doing? And if we came up short, let's look at what.
One, one thing I've learned, Carrie, that some districts do is, uh, whenever there's a board meeting on the agenda, um, it'll state how, uh, it relates to the strategic plan.
Nice.
Or, or how it fits in with the plan. And it'll point to a specific part. Like when we have to make a decision about a technology purchase, it'll say this refers to strategic plan, technology, blah, blah. You know, and then some of that accountability, maybe that you're looking for would be involved there.
Yeah, I mean, like, I don't remember who said it over here. It's, it's more than just words on paper. You know, make it, I, I just wanna make sure that it, the work that's going into it, that it actually means something.
Good question. Um.
But if there's, they're also like going to be kind of a living document as far as like when we're shooting to do certain things.
Yeah, yeah, I think.
So that we don't miss marks or forget, you know, like, oh, yeah.
It's, it's similar to the board calendar, you know, we just kinda outline it and hopefully within that, so again, when, uh, when we get rolling, at least the vision that I have, um, you know, we have, once a month, we have a regular meeting, which, again, that's further discussion, but like these work sessions are great, because I, you like the conversation. I personally would like to get rid of them. Um, and then every other month, we have a work session. So you have two meetings in one month and the focus is one of these pillars right here. So, um, instead of a, you know, you come in, you do a regular meeting, you get rid of your, you know, business items and move forward. But then every other month, you have a work session and the topic is very, uh, purposeful, is one. So let's say we talk about technology, that's the only topic. I bring in Frank because he's the expert in our district and we sit there and we go through only technology. So you guys get to do a deep dive right into that. And that's where, um, at least my experiences where boards have found, um, those discussions. So it's kind of like a, it's a, it's a work session on steroids in terms of, but it's only focused on one topic. And to that point, it's very strategic in terms of, it's just technology. Now, again, sometimes other things come up. So then the next one, we're gonna talk just facilities. So I bring in Ryan. We take the tool, we do those things. And that's, again, it's purposeful. It's, and I'm not saying work sessions now aren't purposeful, because they are, they're good discussions, but it's, it's more centered. So you guys can come in focused on one topic and you can think about all the conversations you've had in the last year about facilities. So, uh, again, that's, that's my overall, but the board is gonna dictate what that looks like and if that's, uh, something you wanna pursue. Any other comments? Anything stick out, any?
No, I, I like what you said about how the, the, um, what has, the, the budget and financial stewardship and the facilities and infrastructure columns are extra long. And that's where the focus has been, where rightly so, just privately. Um, and to, to shift some of that focus into the, uh, the other columns is kind of, I know that's what everybody's looking forward to. So, um, you know, it, we've said, you know, move forward or turn the page, it's like, I mean, but there were a lot of pages to turn. And you can see that, that here, I mean, there was a, a lot of work that has been done in that. And I, and I feel like we have a, a nice, firm ground on which to stand now to, to, to move forward. And so, I, I, I mean, one way to look at that is like, boy, we didn't do a lot of work there. But, you know, it was work that needed to be done and it was valuable. So who does, to everybody involved in that, it's extraordinary.
Well, I think, uh, you know, some of these things came up, we're in that with, uh, um, Doc and Chuck for my evaluation. And there's been so many things that have gone on in such a short amount of time. You lose, because again, this is not a normal circumstance. And, uh, some of the things that come up is like, oh, I'm trying to put my finger on, did this happen? You know, how did we get to this point? And I think to your point, if, if I can go through the number of pages just to get to tonight, it's case in point, tonight, you're going to, in consent, you're gonna approve the final agreements for all the staff. I mean, it took down three full days just to get through that process and get the right W R S, get everything. And, and this is what every administrator sitting here has to go through just to get to where we're at right now. And again, I don't wanna beat a dead horse, but in the same degree, I do, I have to explain it time and time again because it, like, how come this, Patrick, you've had a year and a half, why was this not in front of us a year ago? Because I was able to do that in a different district. Well, here's why. And the work that has been done, again, so many people have put in. Um, but I'm looking forward to fulfilling those first three columns and really putting some focus in. Um, and we just haven't been able to do that. I'll bring up another point, um, because this came up in that same meeting. Um, the question came, well, where's our, you know, staff employee handbook? Um, I wanted to make, because it came up as a question, I wanted to make sure that the whole board knew. This is our handbook here, you can see, which is not a handbook. It's right here. And this is one of the things that we're working on, uh, with Neola. And if you click on our policies, it says employee handbook. And if you go into it, basically, it's just a variety of policies in a list. I, I've never seen, this is not employee handbook. And big, and I know that because we developed and built on this one that is a hundred and eighty pages and includes everything that a staff member has to do, including our strategic plan. And so just that was kind of, you know, again, this is where it was revised. And this is W S B. So Chuck and, and Doc were down at the W S B convention. Now, we're gonna go with the Neola handbook, but we didn't have an existing handbook where everything's there. So when we talk about the governance of just how we incorporate H R in our district, there's been so many holes. So this is, again, um, these are once a month that I meet with Neola to go through and try to develop. And as you know, it just takes time. And, um, you know, in terms of what is incorporated in this handbook, that's why W S B has countless attorneys on staff. Um, these are the updates from the state legislator. Uh, if you have a compensation plan, it's in there. If you have a strategic plan, it's in there. If you look at any policy that basically governs our staff, it's in there and we just don't have it. So again, I wanted to outline, you know, that's the work that's happening on the backside that is not typical. I mean, you would assume that you would have a handbook in place and you just. I wanted to allow for, uh, questions. Um, we're almost at the end, but is there any other questions that, uh, you guys, when you went through these documents or anything that caught your eye? Something that we didn't include that you thought we should have included?
I thought the, uh, the, uh, video graph looks great. I'm guessing a lot of these photos were done by Wald or somebody.
Yeah, we had, uh, Wald and actually Markman Johnson came together, um, and they actually, they're looking forward to seeing this final product because, and that was just part of our overall package. Um, but they use it as a marketing tool too, but, um, yeah, they, the photographer did a tremendous job. Again, if you're, if you're a, a student looking, a family, I mean. Again, if you're a student looking, a family, I mean, very pleased with the outcome of a lot of the areas that were addressed. Okay, if there's no questions, that's all I have for tonight.
Okay.
Do you do like the video, all the videos you've got together?
Yeah.
This is just something I've been seeing lately. Having like a virtual tour with a drone, like a drone flies through and like, shows everything, like a person will be walking.
Yeah.
It gives a really cool perspective that people can just click on and.
Yeah, no, that's a very good idea.
I don't know. I do.
Do you?
Maybe.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know. Do they charge? He's a friend of mine, so I could ask him if he could maybe do it for free or. I think they're like a sweet way to see, like, if you go to like any kind of professional site or anywhere, they have one. Just. Right, yeah.
There's some really good things on there.
Yeah, I mean, that stands out, that looks great. And if you, I mean, some of their samples are huge, but even from the, you know, gyms. I will, I will.
You can just give my contact.
I will, absolutely, thank you.
You're going to take the pictures? Okay, you don't want to be in the pictures?
No.
Okay.
I wonder now if everybody can see it though.
All right, and at this time, I'd like to call our school board, we have a school district of Glenwood Order. Roll call, all members present, we said Joey Maine at this time. Next up is our class two thousand twenty-five.
And I'm punching my mitt. My goodness, and it started so quickly, I'm glad. Amazing.
It was usually pretty much on time.
So I tasked, I tasked the students with talking a little bit about, I don't know, what their day looks like or why they've chosen the educational journey that they have, what they're doing going forward. So first, I think we will introduce our co-valedictorian, Elena Lepkowicz. And Elena, you can introduce your person who has been used, how important a little bit about what you're going to do.
Okay, so my day is a little weird compared to most other seniors. I take four online classes, two being Wisconsin Virtual School classes, so I take A P Gov, Government and Politics, and Economics and Financial Literacy. I chose A P GoPro mostly because it's a graduation requirement, because I'm not taking citizenship, but also because it's going to be really important when I go to law school eventually. And I chose economics just because I could personal finance and I really liked it, so I went to do the other one similar. And in the afternoon, I take two online college courses, so Health and Nutrition and Elementary Statistics. So the stats class, I really wanted to get a generals out of the way, make it a little bit easier going into college. And the other class was, seemed like a lot of fun, so get an elector on the way to, just to go into college with a little bit more experience than a normal high school student.
And so Elena, we see in the afternoon. I know, and so, and Alana kind of has that same split day as well. And I've talked to Alana a little bit about, about that experience. And Elena too, because your day looks a bit different, do you feel like you have yourself on anything?
Sometimes, mainly it's just the whole, like, you don't get the, ever making a joke in class and getting to like hang out with your classmates, but other than that, it's actually been really bad for me.
I asked them to talk a little bit about it because we try to provide as many experiences as we can and opportunities for our students, different variety, accelerated learning, online learning, college courses, in person, and so I thought this was a great way to educate you a little bit about what our students are doing, why they're doing what they're doing, and how, you know, positives may be negatives about their day. So, Alana, can you introduce who you're with and then tell us a little bit about what your day looks like and maybe what you're going to, what I mean, what you're interested in?
All right, this is my mom and dad, Jeremy and Greg. My day also is a little different than the average day. I have English one or two in the morning at Stowe. Eight AM class to nine fifteen, or nine twenty-five. And then I drive home and take A P Calculus for fourth hour, which is eleven eleven to like around twelve-ish. And then I go home and I have two more online college classes as well, which are introductory sociology and chemistry as well. And then I come back for seventh hour, band and choir, and finish on my day with practice. And the reason I have this is because I'm going into biochemistry and business, so I'm trying to do a major next year in two very different fields. So with the way I'm doing things, the class that I'm taking at Stowe, I'll be able to get dual credit, so both high school credit and it will fulfill some general credits for my college classes as well. So instead of potentially having to take a fifth year in my undergrad, I would be able to complete it on track with four years and be able to do a major in like two of the very different fields. Similar to Elena, I took A P GoPro last year. And although it is different than, different than the years prior, like different than the normal high school schedule, it's honestly very nice, like, it, I feel like it prepares me well for what I'm going to experience next year. Gives you a good feel of what college professors are like, what the classes are like, how to balance your workload. And I think that's a very beneficial thing.
I think that that's a really good point too. While you're talking, I was thinking about, I know all of you, obviously, we've got some great high achieving students here. And one of the things that we do talk a lot about is how do we provide these opportunities and how can we make sure that we are promoting them, advertising them. But it really takes a certain type of student to be able to be successful, either virtually or at the college level in person. You know, you have to be a certain, a certain type of student to be able to manage that, and that's really important. And obviously, we have those type of students here. But, I mean, they work really hard and they're doing a fantastic job. But I think you both kind of illustrated the opportunities that we do provide here. Ms. Kira Dahl, I don't know what we would do without you. Kira is our faithful announcer in Glenwood City, and we're going to do the announcements, and I don't know how we're going to manage next year. But if you would introduce who you have with you, Kira is our salutator. And talk a little bit about what your day looks like and what you're planning on going to.
Okay, this is my mom, this is my dad, Lynn and Andy. And so I've taken my fair share of online classes too, but I still get the full school day. I'm interested in going to, oh, I'm actually going to Eau Claire for music education. So music has been a big part of my school day, and I'm really grateful that Glenwood City has such an awesome music program, so I get the opportunity to do the things I do during my day. So my second hour, I take studio art, but every C day for the middle schoolers, I get to tap for the seventh and eighth grade girls choir. So solo and ensemble just happened, and I got to work with a lot of them individually and help them learn their music and their pieces and work on their singing, so that was really fun. And I'm excited to work on their pop concert music group with them. And then also during my fifth hour, I tap for elementary music, which has been very interesting. I don't see myself as an elementary teacher, but it's definitely fun to like see all the different levels of teaching and like what it takes to be a teacher and to do that every day. So I'm really thankful I've been able to do that. And I spend a lot of day working on my music. I'm done with my online class now, I just have a final to take, so I've been like practicing my crunch bar during the day besides like all my other classes, so I spend a lot of my time here doing music. And I feel like it's going to help me a lot as I go into music education as a degree and as a future teacher, so.
Alana is also our academic excellence scholarship award winner, and we did invite Alana tonight. She's our technical education, her technical excellence scholarship winner. She was not invited to be here, she had worked tonight, so I want to recognize her as well. Do you have any more questions for our students?
Where are you, where are you going to school, you going to?
Um, I'm planning on going to either Carthage or Glenwood, but I'm still keeping an eye because I'm really trying to narrow down what's best for me.
I'm going to Belmont University in Nashville.
And what's the end goal? I know you want to be a teacher.
I want to do stem cell research, so I want to like conduct a media team, which like performs research. And later on, if like, I feel like I have been successful in that, I want to work on a businessman, be a businessman for like a stem-based company. I think that would be the ultimate goal.
After undergrad, I'm going for sports administration, so I'm going to law school after that to hopefully become a lawyer for a major sports team.
I can't wait to see it happen. You amaze me. I think one of the things that is so great, that it's great that we are able to provide a variety of opportunities for our learners that need, that need it. One of the things that is hard, selfishly, you are all great leaders in your own right. You really are, you're setting good examples, you are making great choices, and you are positive role models in your class, and it's hard to have you out of the building. It really is, because we need, we need more students like you. So we do miss you when you're gone. I don't know what we'll do without you, and we're all so very, very, very proud of you and wish you well. So with that, congratulations to all. We are going to have to, we're going to take a picture?
Yeah, we're going to walk down, so first of all, congratulations. I've had the pleasure to get to know each one of you, and we're very proud of what and how you've handled your education here and how you've basically put Glenwood City in terms of representation. We are going to walk down to the front, we want to get a picture with you and Miss Birch and your family, just so that we can celebrate this occasion. Being the valedictorian, salutator, it is not a, it doesn't happen overnight, and you guys know that. The work that's been put in, and we want to showcase that work. This is a short meeting in terms of you being here, but graduation is going to come up very fast, and your speeches are going to be your opportunity to be in front of everyone, say your piece. And then go from there. So we're going to walk down. I also want to get a picture with our students and the board, again, just to memorialize this event, because again, this doesn't happen overnight, this is, you know, you've been in high school four years, but it goes along or more beyond that. So congratulations to all of you. So if the board would please follow our students and families down to the front.
Just so you know, YouTube's still on. I don't know where the microphone is, so I'm going to have to watch it, because I don't know if it's on my computer now, because it used to be on the camera. So I don't know if, when I'm typing, click, 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 click. I know. There's only one person on, but I'll have to watch it and see. Because I wonder if it'd be beneficial to get a, yeah, I don't know. The, the, go stand, go stand over there and talk, and let me see how.
Go ahead.
Because I got little green buttons on the bottom that tell me. Test one, two, three, yeah, it definitely comes up. One, I have, I, because, I mean, I don't know, I have it set to that.
You do, huh?
Can I wonder honestly though, if you mute your thing over there for right now? Can I wonder honestly though, if you mute your thing over there for right now?
Um, I have to go, no. I have to go in and, yeah, I have to go to my last four hit. And then I have to go into June.
Erin, do you remember?
All right, everybody's back? Okay. All right, uh, next slide that we have is the WSB resolutions approved at state presentation. This was in a booklet that just came off, wasn't it?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
I just, I wanted to make everyone aware of this is what was discussed and this was, was approved. So if you guys had any questions on any of them.
Anybody have any questions? Ask Chuck. You lived it, that's true. Okay. Next, next is, uh, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda. So motion is made by Sally. You have a second? Second, second by Carrie. Carrie? I have one of the joys not here, so. All right. Any further discussion? Hearing that all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All say no. Motion carried. Next up is our open forum timeframe. Is there anybody in the gallery that has anything that they would like to say or contribute to? Okay. Next, we'll move on to the consent agenda. IMA is announced from the February 2024, 25 meeting. B is the approval of January 2025 financial statement. C is approval of February 2025 accounts payable. D is the approval of paraprofessional resignation. E is the approval of paraprofessional resignation. F is the approval of national school resignation. G is approval of paraprofessional recommendation. H is approval of volunteer coaches. I is the approval of spring coaches. J is the approval of the first food service donation. K is approval of the DECA overnight competition recommendation. L is the approval of donation from Viking Coca-Cola. M is the approval of technology donation from Hiwaith and National Bank. N is the approval of angel fund donation. O is the approval to purchase human growth and development curriculum. P is the approval of the 2025 game times summer billing and payment guidelines. Q is the approval of network switch replacements using remaining E-rate cycle funds. R is the approval of the GCHS class of 2025 senior class trip. S is the approval of GCHS golf donation. T is the approval of 2025, 26 CSAL contract, contract co-gramming services. U is the approval of GCSD past compensation process and procedure deficiencies matrix summary. V is the approval of Anne Marie Foundation Grant. W is the approval of City of Glenwood City Emergency Operations Plan. X is the approval of GCHS athletic finance credit for 2025, 26 schooling. Y is the approval of GCSE in the City of Glenwood City Sign Plan. And Z is the approval of Genius Taste of the Draft Nutrition Equipment Grant, $5,000. There's a lot of items on the agenda. Are there, is there any discussion or clarification to questions? Go ahead.
Is the, uh, the City of Glenwood City Emergency Operations Plan, is that something that is new or is that a renewal?
This is a renewal. This was based on the new chief and he's not new per se. But this, he's going through a variety of policies and processes himself. So he developed this plan. And again, I wanted to make sure it was in front of the board in terms of this is, and it's typical boilerplate to me. But more of an understanding between the two entities.
And it's basically like if a tornado came through the town or, you know, it flooded or something.
Yeah, people come, yeah. There's other schools that still have the shelter signage that's up. But yeah, our understanding is that we will, and I, we would do it anyway. But it's an agreement to save our community if we have any type of weather disaster or even anything else COVID-19, things with that. So just an overall plan.
Um, as far as the, um, the curriculum that we're approving for the human growth and development, is that why you taught by like one of our finance teachers?
Yeah, so Hall Olson as a health teacher will be teaching that. Yep.
Okay.
Um, and then we've talked about as far as splitting up males and females and all of that and the guidance with that, so.
Can I also see in here that the, there's a few lessons that are being excluded, one being consent.
Yes.
I'm wondering if that's, um, covered anywhere or?
So there is another, so if you look at, um, the link to the state statutes, there is, um, some stuff there that we do need to address with as far as, um, let me just pull it up here, it's the second one. Um, with, um, is that recognizing? Yes, the, yeah, recognizing and providing and that kind of stuff. So if you look at where I did pull that out, it's not required for us to teach that part of it. And it just got a little bit too far in the weeds. We thought for what we're trying to do. Right now, our basic is just trying to give them the period education. These are the changes happening in the bodies at this level. This is what's going to be coming, more of that awareness part of it for that. That is something that hasn't been covered at the elementary previously. So just kind of giving them that base level knowledge that they need and then looking further in the future as far as things go. But right now, all we're asking for approval is just the period education.
To that, except, I knew we were wrong last week, but we talked about where there, there hasn't been a committee here based on statute. So we're developing a plan that will oversee this. So firstly, you know, we have not fulfilled that obligation. We should have, this curriculum, um, to address those areas.
At least we feel like giving them, yeah, what, what the basic knowledge of what we need. Some of those kids are getting that at home, obviously, and that kind of stuff. And then two, I was just pulling up the other one that you see. And again, once we have a committee and all of that stuff, we'll be able to have a further discussion about what we're gonna cover.
We didn't, we didn't, we didn't say that we'll start next year, get the cricket here, get the planning working on. Jamie and Marcy have been working with Shane and Ollie to free up their schedule to make sure that we can address those inappropriately.
And then one last one as far as applying, um, there's a system with the credit there. Um, will like, will you guys be putting something out to the students to, with them? Or the parents that, of those that are eligible?
Yes, so this will be a sign up type of thing. And with Ms. Lappens' retirement, um, I put the summary together to make it more, to make it electronic. So that it's not, it, the copy that we, that I had taken this information from was a paper pencil type of thing. I'd rather have it electronic. So in our registration process, it's maybe after the board approves it tonight, we get it through there. And Ms. Birch is working on the registration. She's got the booklet ready. And yeah, we'll, it'll be part of the newsletter to make sure that it's out there.
Uh, as far as the, uh, human growth and development, are we sending along with the, you know, the opt-out form? Are we actually letting the parents know what is going to be taught so they're informed?
Yeah, there'll be, yeah, there'll be an outline of these are the bullets that what is going to be covered in it.
So I just think it's, it's scary subject for some parents and they, you know, to keep them informed about what is going to be happening.
Yeah.
Might allow them to accept that, yeah, hey, this is something that's gonna be good for my, my students.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Any other questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So.
Motion is made by Chuck. You have a second?
I'll second.
That's a question. All those in favor say aye. And all say no. Motion carried. Next up is our administrative reports.
Uh, before she gets started, sorry, Erin. So tonight, the reports are gonna be centered on the document that we discussed during the work session. So they're just gonna kind of talk about their areas in something that sticks out to them. So they don't have an individual slide that I will show, uh, but they're just gonna reference that. So stay at the table.
As we know, um, we're kind of, we wear a lot of different hats. So as I was creating my list, I actually, one of my last things in my email, as I was making this, I'm sure I forgot something. And then I quick emailed him a little bit later about, hey, I found this thing. And as I was sitting here, I was kind of thinking of some more things as we were going through. Because, um, as I looked through and kept dreaming, um, there's always things that we're doing to improve and that we've done. But it's not something that we've been here every day. But there are some things that have been big things throughout the time that I've been sitting in the office since Miss Patrick's been here and since we've been a team. But some of the bigger things have been, um, being able to have, um, Ms. Humphrey in as our school nurse. Um, that's been a great change for our district. And as I reported not that long ago, we've also seen that increase. And I think it will start to slow down now, maybe after the, um, Lou Caesar cold season has maybe started to slow down a little bit. But as she's been getting to know students and our school district, her line will hopefully not be as long outside the, uh, health office door. Um, but that has been a great service for us here and an opportunity for our district. But also, um, we hired two, um, brilliant special education teachers this year. And SISA has a wonderful, um, induction program. And they have learned some great things, um, next through season eleven. Each time they come back, they have wonderful things to say about this program. And then of course, Sue coming through, um, kind of winds those things up with our mentorship program. But they have both Ms. Marbeck and Ms. Dever have great things to say about the induction program. And Ellie Hall comes down here also to visit with them and to do the observations. And they work with, she also works with their mentors, um, to just discuss different topics. So having that with them in the classroom and those conversations has made a great impact on their first year here at UC and their first year as special education teachers. So just having those chances to collaborate with other new teachers so they can bounce ideas off for special education, for, um, writing different things and just student relationships and all these opportunities that they are able to provide for those first-year teachers. I actually have been joining meetings this year to do with that. Our last one was just last week. And having, even only, only get to meet virtually every once in a while, but having that opportunity then to hear their feedback about not only our teachers, but what we are seeing with our observations of them in the classrooms and just their relationships that they've been able to build. And what we think of the program itself. They are able to extend that opportunity throughout the next year's coming. So it's actually a three-year program. So the next two years is going to be a more of a virtual format. They won't be always meeting face to face. And we've also been a coaching and a networking for the next two years. So they can expand that opportunity. But being able to have that provided, um, has been a great opportunity for us and them altogether. We've also been able to increase, um, the direct, um, special education opportunities for that instruction, um, for our students, um, just to better support that, um, our students, directly working with our special education teachers and increase, um, the par educator support this year by increasing their hours.
Is, is the increased direct special education instruction, is that due to more staff? Or are we changing it kind of the way you do things, like they're spending more time directly with that teacher instead of being in the classroom?
We did change the model. We changed the model a little bit. We changed the format of where the educators were. Instead of them always pushing in, we changed the model a little bit. So that way they're more central to their classroom, the students are near them instead of, and the par educators. Because we were also able to increase their hours, they're able to go into the classroom. The par educators are able to go into the classrooms more to support. And the students coming out for maybe smaller chunks of time, but that direct instruction within their classroom.
Is a parent educator with a, a sped student when they're with their sped teacher?
At times.
So it depends on the kid or?
Depends on the student and the need. And then it also depends on the group size with the special education teacher.
Sure, sure.
Um, we also expanded that school site hours this year for enhanced evaluations. We were working, um, Bonnie and I have also worked together this year to do the past evaluations from before I was, um, the director and going through and we'd be totally backwards. We worked back to the front in going through, um, those student files, kind of going through everything. And then of course, expanded the childcare and being able to offer that. They do have their anniversary, the thirteenth, so they were open for a year. The six weeks to three years, so we celebrated that. But that was a wonderful opportunity for our, for our school. And then our partnerships with neighboring schools for other related services and resources have been a great benefit in establishing a gap fund. And then improving mental health by getting Roland Hill back in here this year and that MOU with them. And of course, anything that I've forgotten, going along with the nurse, we did last year, we had training for the Narcan and bringing that up. Nonviolent crisis intervention training. We really increased our numbers in that for training for staff. We went from probably ten to fifteen, actually ten to twelve staff. We had increased it to twenty-six staff being trained for that. And then upgrading and updating the first runner doors for enabling all of our extra access doors to our safety. So just things that I did not think of as real ones.
And I'm all in favor of adding things to the school.
Yes, so I'm trying to think of a couple of other things that we're going through. We can add to this list, we can keep adding. But we started looking at those more and more. Well, the only reason I thought of the safety components, I looked down, I saw a brand new twenty-five sign right out the window. I was like, hey, here's another one.
Okay, all right. So a couple of things just to highlight for you. And it's stuff we've already kind of updated you guys on and everything. I will say, one of the biggest pieces of advice I got from numerous other principals before I accepted this job in my first year and everything was, don't make too many changes your first year. While I've made a few changes to things as I kind of look at things, but hopefully there's kind of been balance there. So one of the biggest things I think that I'm really proud of and I think is an accomplishment for the elementary school is getting back to that standards work. One of the biggest messages I've cast to the staff, the curriculum doesn't drive what we teach, the standards do. And so going back and revisiting the standards, making sure the essential standards, again, essential standards are not the only thing we're gonna teach. It's gonna be the most important things we teach at a certain grade level. So going back through re-identifying and regulating their standards. And then just the discussions that come up from that has been so beneficial for staff as far as how they're teaching different things, what grade levels are covering certain parts of it. When we start breaking apart a standard and looking at the benchmarks and different things like that. And then having the fun conversations about assessments, the forwardative and the backwardative assessments. So how are we gonna assess these kids? How often on the standards to know if they truly learn it or not? So I think that's been a huge accomplishment for the elementary school is having those discussions. The PLC work that we've done with that, I really feel like everybody's been working on them. Again, we're making progress, but yet it's fun to see the conversations happening at other grade levels or even within a grade level. Oh, well, that's how we were grading this, this is how I was grading this. Like, okay, let's have a discussion. How are we all gonna be grading it the same way? Because a third-grade classroom should be using all the same common assessments to write the grades with that. So that's kind of the biggest thing. The other thing is I waited a little bit, but then I went through and kind of did some restructuring to the RTI program, Response Standard Mention, and our title services that we had to make sure that those struggling students in reading and math were getting the supports that they needed. And then working on creating more of a multi-level systems of support model where we're also including the behavior pieces of those students in regular access. So those are kind of the two big things from there. And then again, as we're identifying these essential standards with reading language arts, that's when we kind of find a little bit more of gaps and holes in some of our instructions. So then what are we gonna do? So there's two new things next year that I'm gonna be pulling in and implementing as far as literacy instruction at the elementary, one being a UFLI reading program. And then also this year I pulled in the Hagerty phonological program. So again, just kind of finding those missing pieces to kind of help those students. So those are kind of my two big takeaways.
I have a question.
Did you do anything else or? There's a few things I have to talk about.
Can you refer from memory where the essential standards come from?
Yeah, so again, it's a framework that was put out. If we sit here and.
By the Department of, Department of Education.
Yes, yes.
DPI.
DPI, yeah.
This is, they say, this is what we think is the most important.
No, we decide, we determine what are essential, okay? So when you look at standards for reading language arts, grade three, for example.
Yeah.
If I were to pull up the standards, you have pages upon pages. I think it's a two-hundred-and-some document for third grade, pages of standards, okay? Not two-hundred standards, but a ton of standards, which is a two-hundred-page document. So taking that and looking at those standards and saying, okay, in third grade, what are our non-negotiables? What do we find are the most essential things for students to learn at this level to be successful for the next level?
And that's, you made a decision.
We make locally, yeah. Then that's a decision we make locally as far as what the kids need to know, okay? Again, it's taking back what the standards that are already there that we've adopted as a district are the state standards.
And since they've identified them as standards.
Yep.
I'm guessing those, that's reflected on the forward exam.
Part of how you categorize or determine what are essential is that are they, do the students need them for years at a time? Will you use this going forward? Are they tested, do you need this in the next grade level? Are they things that will benefit you, yeah, I mean, REA L?
Yep, you're right with that as far as, the two biggest things that we looked at are what do they need? You know, what are they taught coming to us? So we looked at both sides of the standard. So being taken third grade to the second grade, what have they been taught to come to us? What do they need to know before they go to fourth grade? So again, looking at that standpoint. And then when you brought up the testing, you know, yes, it's a reality of it, Wisconsin Forward. So we were able to data mine that data and go look and see what are the most commonly assessed standards. So it would show up, you know, RF3 is one of our biggest standards as far as decoding words for students, breaking apart the sounds and the words to be able to read individual words. That standard is crucial because kids obviously need to know how to read. So that standard shows up as an essential standard, different levels, per grade level, okay? And we can look and see that standard shows up fourteen times on the Wisconsin Forward on the third grade level. Okay, so that's kind of how we'd also narrow it down.
Approximately exactly fourteen times.
Yeah, we can say, I can bring it up for you if you want. I've got that data, unfortunately.
And we can see how our students are doing.
And then we can see how our students are doing on it.
Particular standards. And so it's, you know, if there are that many questions, we go, all right, we need to address this. If there's one or two and it's maybe not something that is essential to move on to that next grade, okay, maybe we don't need to focus, yeah, we don't need to focus that much on it.
And again, it's still taught. I don't want everybody to underthink that it's not built on. We still have to teach all the standards. You know, it's just what are our focuses, are our non-negotiables of these kids need to get this.
Does that change? Does it change depending on the class or what the data's showing yet or?
It doesn't, the only time that would change is if you have a new set of standards, okay? If the state adopts a new set of standards and then the district then adopts those new standards. And again, the state of Wisconsin has gone through.
They cycle through.
Cycle through of standards with that. But again, that goes back to my saying that I always say to the staff, the curriculum doesn't drive what we teach, the standards do. So even though your group of students might change in front of you, you still have to teach them that, but your approach to it might be a little bit different with this group as compared to the last group. Or we've been approaching this standard this way with this group and it's just not working. So what else are we gonna do or how are we gonna change that and pivot from there?
I think this conversation was, one of the driving forces would be time, calendar change. You know, when do teachers have those conversations? You know, now it's once a month. And so we just talked about the agenda for the April PLE. We have to give staff those opportunities that they don't have students and they can actually have these conversations because they don't just have.
Can I ask another question?
Yeah, to her, please. Just kidding.
You didn't want to change too much. You already mentioned two things that you want to change next year. You've got, I'm guessing some other things coming around in your head that you're looking forward to implementing next year?
Yeah.
Good.
Yes, yes.
I'm looking forward to hearing it.
Okay, thank you.
Nope, she's done, she's done.
I'm done. Just tapping off, is that enough?
I am choosing to highlight some of our changes in our testing as well as course additions, modifications. You know, we've just given the ACTs, we will be giving the pre-ACTs Thursday. And actually, Mr. Pop was in the audience and he has been working with Nicole Lehman and all of the staff to make sure that everybody's ready and trained and we're setting up the most, the best environment that we can for our students. If you have those questions out in the community, why do you do what? Why, why do you have that model? Why did we shut everything down for a day when we did ACTs? Why are we changing things for pre-ACTs? And it's because we do get results. The Martin Hazard's boy ranking number two out of the thirty-nine schools in our CISA, that's fine, that's why we do what we do, because we put the kids in the best environment. We prepare them the way that they need to be prepared. And we have the data behind it. We don't do things that just, if things are gonna work, we have proof that they do. And we're doing that with our pre-ACTs. So putting students in small groups with staff that they feel comfortable with, setting up a good environment, and we are not, we're not sending everyone else home. We did just do that, and so there could be that argument whether to do that for more contemporaries. We argue that the ACTs are a little bit higher states testing. So we choose to really lock things down and quiet down building for those. Pre-ACTs are competing for, usually do show our progress. But sending the rest of the building home for both days might be, might be a little bit much. We're doing kind of the hybrid model for pre-ACTs where we have smaller groups, but we are still conducting class for our older students. We've got a whole schedule of if your teacher is proctoring, you're gonna go here and your day is going to continue so that we're not just having study halls all day long, things like that. So why do we do what we do? Because it's working and because we have found that it is what's best for our kids. We have, it was, it happened to work. We talk a lot about the different opportunities that we can and do provide for our students. This was a perfect way to illustrate how those opportunities work, what we can provide for our students. And it's great to hear from them about what our, you know, valedictorians, what their day looks like, what opportunities we're able to give them. And I'm very proud of that because I think in the districts, a district of this size, the amount of opportunities, different opportunities that we're able to provide and provide is, is huge. We did act this year and something again, very, very proud. Went to my ELA department and said, okay, why can't we? Why can't we, why can't we change the model? Why can't we change some offers? Why can't we? We pushed these players into algebra in order to accelerate those high flyers. Why can't we do something like that for our eighth-grade ELA students? And so our ELA courses are formal, it's our semester-based, so students have a little bit more choice. You don't just take English, tenth-grade English. You have options now. And our eighth graders, our high flyers are pushed forward into a combined eighth ninth class. And so we're able to accelerate them. So again, just another opportunity that we're able to provide. And I'm very proud, proud to be able to make that happen. Proud of my staff who are the creativity and the work behind it. They're making it happen, but the willingness to do it and the opportunity has been great. So those are a couple of things that I would highlight. We, as you know, have finally been able to make our CTE project come to fruition. We have finished things and spent the money that has been allocated for years. And the use of those machines and what our students have been able to produce thus far is so exciting. And I just hiring a full-time teacher, having the right equipment for him. And the students are just, they are loving it. It's so exciting, so I would say I'm very proud of that. And I don't know if I'm gonna do anything different next year, Chuck, so.
Well. You've been here a long time, it should be done by now.
So I think that's the end of my report. Okay, thank you. Business action. First item up is the approval of the DCS, the class of two thousand forty-five scholarship month. So this is associated to, I really Russell Meyer, I thought everyone's ready to do.
No, we, so you approved the ones last month, but more questions came up at the meeting. And the more that I looked into it, because you guys brought, one of you mentioned a formula. We could not find the formula on how Russell Meyer. And I went through, Deb and I went through this extensively because the family deserves it. We looked at the Last Long Testament. We wanted to make sure that everything was exactly the way the family. Mr., I didn't know him personally, but obviously he gave his life savings to this scholarship. So I summarized everything and I'm asking the board to, because number one, I wanted to document it. Number two, there was some very inconsistencies that I needed to find the answers to. So with all that said, I'm not gonna go through the parameters there, but they're outlined. The other part of that that I want the board to know is because of where this was invested, there was a lot of inconsistent growth and then decreases. And that really put a damper on some of the amounts that were given over the years. Because of where it's at now, there's gonna be a consistent number. In the end, if you look at that list, is there any questions that you have in terms of how I got to the recommendation of the eighteen hundred?
So now we will have, each year will have a set amount and it will change or it will increase or?
No, it will, it can change. So there's a variation there, but I was, I didn't know how Ron got to that number. Because he just basically told Shelby, here's the number and here's how many get it. And I, and again, through our discussion last month, it really helped me to understand how was that amount determined? But I wasn't, I just had questions like how, and is this truly what the intention of the Meyer family was? And again, was it? So if you look at the formula for this year, there's thirteen, offering thirteen at eighteen hundred, which again, I'm asking the board to approve. But based on the inconsistencies of revenue and liabilities, I think we can be more consistent because that's the problem we had with Paco. You, I mean, there was times where we lost seven grand in one quarter. You can't, that's why schools don't get into that business. You want consistencies with four and a half percent growth. So again, I'm looking at the board to approve. They have gone, if you look at the past of nineteen, twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four, we didn't find all of it, but a lot of it was documentation purposes too in respect to the Meyer family. So asking the board to do the final approval, we're looking at thirteen scholarships for eighteen hundred dollars this year. That's great.
Eighteen hundred each?
Each.
Each, yeah. And I'm assuming that's what the twenty-five thousand interest was? Because that was kind of like where it was supposed to originate from. It's just supposed to take the interest and then divide it for the top twenty-five percent.
Well, we narrowed it down to where, because we could not find, we finally found it looking back. But like, what was the initial principle? We couldn't find documentation of what the initial principle was.
That hundred and sixty-some thousand?
Hundred and sixty-three.
Yeah, because I remember it was a hundred and sixty-some thousand dollars.
And we, we found it here. So again, in the original, and I put it in administrative content, this is the actual will.
Right.
But there's two parts in there. One says the top half of the class and then the top twenty-five percent and so on. But again, out of respect for the Meyer family, we just wanted to make sure that everything was truly documented. So in the future years, people know exactly what the amount should be based on what formula it is and what the pass is getting. I do feel much better about the LGIP. I do feel much better about the LGIP interest rate because it's going to be consistent. You're not going to see the, you know, take two grand in revenue or then lose six grand because it's not in that type of investment anymore.
So I want to take motion to, for the approval of the class two thousand twenty-five scholarship for Ross and Russell Meyer, thirteen scholarships at eighteen-hundred dollars. Motion made by Sally, who has seven.
Second.
Second by Tony. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion paid. Next is the approval of the GCMs in high school, April twenty-one, two thousand twenty-five Community Service Day.
So there's two parts to this recommendation. Number one, as you know, probably, I've been super thirteen years. Every, I would say, four years, you seem to have a winter where you have to cancel school more than once. Right now, we are twenty-one, roughly twenty-one hours of instruction short with a regular day. With that said, there's different things that different districts have done in the past to make up that time. Because of our lack of employee handbook and that, really how to address those, we're making changes for next year, including going virtual days on these snow days where staff's prepared, things like that. So the elementary hours don't necessarily mean much because we're always over that state threshold. With that, we were trying to come up with different ways to be creative for this year. The other thing, when we talk about staff handbook and that the board will have to decide for next year is, okay, what, what does the board want to do? Currently, the practice for Runwood has been first two days are forgiven for teachers. They're just, they don't have to make it up. I want clarification for the board. What does that look like? Is it two days? Is it, you know, whatever the board decides? With the instruction, it's pretty straightforward. We also looked at some other ways. I talked to some other districts when you talk about how do you make up hours? And I'm confident in terms of the hour part of fulfilling the documents for DPI. If you add this day, now we're down to roughly fourteen hours. In that, we also have lunch times where you can take that thirty minutes and you, it basically takes fifteen minutes for us to serve our students at the high school level. And so that other fifteen minutes is typically, it can be a lot of different things. Students are conversing. We do have the gym open where they can go out there. Some schools actually count that as physical education, that type of thing. So I feel confident in terms of fulfilling that document with this. I'm the last in my career, I've called snow day, I've made fifth, so I'm not saying it's done just yet. But with that said, to make up those, those hours this year, I, we have a plan. And this includes it. Going back to this Community Service Day, this is something that I've always been very passionate about. Next year, we're actually going to have a full Community Service Day where myself included, we'll take a group of students out and we serve the community to really give back. The elementary will focus on the district campus. Middle school will help like the river, I know Redwood Middle School has done river cleanup, stream cleanup. High school, you know, helping elderly and so forth. And it's just, it's a great day. And I've done this in both my other districts. Servant leadership is something that I just think we can't get enough of. With that said, I'm looking for the board just to approve this for April twenty-first. Going back to our previous conversation, I also don't want to take away the opportunity for these staff members to have these very important discussions. That's a PLD day. So what we're trying to do is create a little bit of a ownership on the students and say, hey, do your community service, take some pictures, help somebody out, count it as instruction. And then next year, we'll have all the details in place to have a full-fledged Community Service Day. So everything is outlined on that recommendation. Is there any questions?
So this day accounts for seven hours and twenty minutes?
Yes.
How are we making up the fourteen?
That's the extra fifteen minutes on lunch. So on the initial report, so basically we're compliant because lunch is indicated as the start of the year for as thirty minutes. We, it only takes us fifteen minutes to actually serve lunch, the extra fifteen minutes. Outbound, Monbilly, and there's some other schools. They count that as their, I would say, leeway for extra instructional minutes.
So we don't have to make up the twenty point seven five that we're short?
This is, this is one way to get it down to fourteen hours.
So we get those fourteen hours forgiven?
Well, no, we have to make it up. I just have to change it in how it's documented. For this year, I'm comfortable doing that. For next year, we need to change our overall plan in terms of when we have a snow day, it's a virtual day. And how do you, and we, we, over the summer, we're going to create a, you know, kind of a template. Staff members will know. So if Mr. Popco knows we have a snow day, students will be responsible. When we say virtual day, it will just be middle school, high school. It's a virtual day. The one thing I've always been a little apprehensive of that is can we guarantee every student has a computer or access? And that, that gets a little dicey, but then we would find ourselves in this situation. So to make up the time this year, it's a combination of this Community Service Day plus the extra fifteen minutes of lunch.
We're calling lunch to, instead of saying.
It's going to accumulate.
Yes.
Oh. I was thinking, okay. As far as confusing.
So that we don't have to take away the day before, you know, Easter Friday, Good Friday, you know? In the past, that's what, you, you look at the days that you have and you're like, okay, should we have school? Like I said, I had a lot of conversations with different districts. What do you do? What do you do? So between that combination, I feel confident to fill out the report and then we're going to make changes for next year. Sorry.
No, that's okay.
All right. Any other make a motion to approve April twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five Community Service Day?
Move.
Motion's made by Steve. Is there a second? Second. Second by theory. Again, any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion paid. Next is the approval of the GCE proposal for music concerts during the day.
I'll let Ms. Shaver talk about this.
There's another change. Okay, so music concerts during the day. So elementary is kind of a little bit of a different scheduling conflict when we have concerts for our littles. So here, traditionally, the concert's the Christmas concert, which every other year it's one grade level. K-two was this year, so next year will be my three, five grade levels. And then the opposite grade level has a spring concert. So those concerts and for cake for kindergarten graduation and that kind of stuff. What I'm proposing is to move that elementary stuff that typically happens in the evenings to during the school day. There's two main reasons for that. So one of the biggest things, and this is something that's very common in elementary schools. It's not what we used to do years ago, but a lot of elementary schools in the last five years have gone to moving during the day. So the two biggest concerns and issues that I have with during the evening ones is the late hours for our littles. So when we have the concert for our K-two in December, those kids, by the time they got out of here, it was eight fifteen, eight twenty. There was a lot of meltdowns. There was a lot of crying. There was a lot of crying parents. Crying administrators. It was a lot, no. And then it carries over to the next day too. When you have, you know, all of those kids out late, then they're coming to school the next day. They're not well-rested, they're not refreshed. So that's kind of the biggest thing, or one of the things. The other thing is the inclusion of all students. So when I looked at all of the hours, our littles put into practicing and that kind of stuff. They participated in the practices, which are during the day. And then some of those kids and kids didn't have the opportunity to come back with their families. Whether their parents had transportation concerns, whether they just didn't bring them back, that kind of stuff. When they're here at school during the day, we have control over that where everybody then still gets to participate, whether or not their parents come. It's not having to bring these kids back. So again, at the high school, middle school level, sometimes they've got older siblings who can bring them back for an evening concert. They carpool, they have friends, they have different things. They're older where they can walk. We don't have that luxury with our littles down at the elementary school. So again, that's kind of the biggest part for me is just the inclusion of all those kids. So benefits to moving and improve student engagement. So they can, you know, like I said, the following day, it's not an issue for them being out late the night before. Greater attendance for families where they not, sometimes with the work schedules, and I understand there could be conflicts with the day work schedule, but there are lots of families who do work the evening shifts and that kind of stuff too. So it does take out their ability to come. And then again, equitable access for all students where all the students can participate, whether or not they have family members who come. One of the, like I said, considerations in the, that would be, could potentially be an issue is it would be a different switch for families to get used to. All of a sudden, they might have to take off a half a day at work or come in at two o'clock for a concert. So one of the things we can look at with that is flexible scheduling options of different times where we offer them, live streaming, recording and that kind of stuff. So I think one thing to kind of keep in mind is, is yes, we have families who work during the day and might have to flex their work schedules a little bit, but we also have a lot of families who work at night, who still have to do that anyway. So I kind of feel like either way, that's going to be a conflict. So I'm proposing to change elementary concerts during the day for the inclusion of all students and just decreasing those late hours and schedules for our young families. Any questions? We're going to ask that again.
So, so a couple other things. I would concur. A lot of districts have moved to this. I've seen it from where concerts are actually held in classrooms instead of whole groups. There's some that again, have it during the day, some that do it at night. I mean, there's the plethora. One of the things when we purchase Huddle is our other gym does not have a Huddle camera like the high school does, but we have portable. So for baseball and softball, we're actually, we have the capacity for the Huddle camera to be remote and put down by the fields and so on, so we can do the same thing there. To Ms. Shaver's point, again, you're never going to find a time that's perfect for everyone. And I think some of the concerns that she's had, you know, are valid. And it is a change. So I wanted to bring it to the board to see what you thought.
I think you're probably going to get, you know, like anything from back at first, this change is hard.
Yeah.
But there's nothing wrong with trying it and seeing where that goes. Like you said, you just can't please everybody and you're never going to get schedules to, to work for everyone, so.
I think it'll be a lot easier for grandparents to show up. I know all of my kids' grandparents refuse that because they just can't support. So that's been a thing of the past. So they, it'll be good.
Did we survey at all? Did we survey parents?
And one of the things, you know, when, when you make changes like this, I oftentimes I want to be enough to have, we have a secondary principals group in our athletic conference. Elementary doesn't have yet, but having that network of principals gives me the opportunity to say, how do you guys do it there? And when you are able to respond with, you know, I know that we're, we're telling you that many schools do this, making that quantifiable and saying, you know, eight out of ten of the other schools in our district have concerts during the day. That is something that, whether people like that or not, it's kind of quantifiable. Here's a number and it's a number that schools like us, that's what we're doing. And so to those people that may have that argument, it's, it's something that we can come back with. Yep, I know it's a change, but you know, we're not, we're not going rogue. We're probably a little bit behind the times in doing those concerts during the day because it is, I think that's more of a trend. But being able to talk to families about the fact that other districts are doing that, this isn't a huge change. I think that would be helpful.
And giving them a heads up on it, not in November, being like, surprise, we're going to have this now in the evening. You know, this were to be something that was approved, getting that information out, having those conversations so then they have some time to adjust to it.
She did do her due diligence. She talked to Matt and Maddie. Do you want to summarize?
Oh, yeah, I did. That was one of the first, you know, I bounce ideas off both of Matt and Maddie because obviously they have a huge part in these with the music piece and both of them were like, that would be amazing. Because also too, I hear it all over and I see it with my own eyes. The music department at high school, middle school is very involved and there are so many kids. So they've got their concert at the high school, middle school, also in the evenings in December. So then again, they're adding on one more thing then too, that Matt and Maddie are having to try to hold some evening in December in an already extremely busy month, and so it kind of just adds on to it. But yes, thank you for bringing it up. Matt and Maddie were both on board and said they would love to see this change.
I like that you focused on it's less about everything else and more about making sure all of our kids are included.
That was sad.
Yeah, that's, that's like, I guess would be the only reason I would make to say, yeah.
All right. Are we okay to move forward? Should we make a motion?
A motion.
Motion is made by Tony. Do I have a second? Second, was that Karen? All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Oppose, say no. Motion paid. Next up is the approval of the Stocker sports floors for Colts.
So I put this on the agenda because at the time we were still looking at comparables and wanting to get feedback from the board. If you look at the courts that we have, obviously you're aware that we have two new floors, one completely re, the other resurfaced. If you look at these warranty options, I was putting Deb, because she was at the Los Boavos Convention. We were still trying to put some numbers together. Looking for this to be approved by the board, but understanding what type of plan we actually want to go with. So if you look at the overall plans in terms of what we have spent in the past, so one is for the elementary, one's for the high school. Option one is obviously the larger for both. And typically, according to our records, and again, just because we didn't do a great job documentation, we were able to narrow down the extent from last year just with well over seven thousand. So wanted to make sure that the board was comfortable going with option one for both floors, which then goes past the five thousand dollar threshold that the board set in terms of board approval. So looking for approval based on option one for both for agreements.
What's the difference with the two finishes? I mean, because the option one and option three like. They're all close to, but what's the difference on them? Is it the finish?
Yeah, the, you know, it's the different components of these finishes, this rebounder, four fifty. Again, we've learned through Stocker, they've actually helped us because we were doing some pretty, I would say, we were hurting our floors more than we were helping just by running the, the, the water. Example. You should never do that. That would have avoided our warranty right away. So again, I put this on the agenda, still working through the numbers. But my recommendation is that we go with, especially after seeing these numbers. We've already in the past, we'd actually saved money, but to go with option one in both accounts, which again, would go over the five thousand threshold.
So this, if we purchase this, any damage that happens to our board is an other warranty. So when I sent you those pictures and.
Yeah, okay. So there, there's still, we were having them come back because Tony saw some widening of the gap in the elementary. So I made them aware, but because the bleachers were changed by the state, we had to do a different set of bleachers. So they are coming back to repaint the dock drills that are in the elementary so that they're going to address that. Plus we had, when the company put up the projector, they scratched the floor and they were willing to pay for that. So we have some things that we want to address.
Okay. I'm just curious on what this actually covered, I guess.
So with your motion, if you could just outline option one for in both regards, which again, when I put this on the agenda, I wanted to get this on their radar so we could get it scheduled. But the threshold we set was five grand and I knew if we would go in. And I wanted to see what we actually have spent in the past, which again, I think the warranty, we all agree that we want to make sure we take care of it um in in our investment. So if you could just outline option one for both.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion for the approval of option one on the Stocker both sports floors, both for our elementary and high school here.
Move.
Motion's made by Chuck.
Second.
And a second, second by Tony. Any further discussion? Hearing not all, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. Motion carried. Next is the approval of the GCE and childcare facility upgrade.
All right, so this recommendation is based on various meetings and let me give you a visual of what we're looking at. If you, uh, this is the elementary and this is the the four K. It's actually for mo- for some of you, it's the old district office that's down in that corner. Um, every, last year, we had a little anomaly just because we went over to the St. John's and used that facility for our Hilltopper hangtime. What we're proposing, um, one of the things that they use quite a bit is inflatables, but also water toys and so on. And we're looking for a true base, um, that is gonna be multipurpose. And so um if you look at the amount, number one, I'm looking to use fund balance monies from fund eighty. When you look at the square footage, we're talking about a four inch slab of concrete. Um, if you look at the recommendation, this is a a meeting with Beth, our coordinator, uh, Aaron Administration, Ryan and so forth. Kind of some local quotes, um, that will, we'll still get three quotes, but I'm looking at what the board feels about moving forward with this. Obviously, when you're putting this type of slab, um, it's it's a, it's a big investment, um, but we feel that it's a worthwhile investment. We can use it for, and if you look at the recommendation, you can see uh why, you know, it's outdoor tables, chalk art, um, instructional areas, equipment storage. Uh, we did last month purchase the portable um storage unit for the um elementary playground. And that's watertight, so that's gonna last for well past um any of our times. So looking at what the board thinks, uh, the number is 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 rather big. Um, in terms of our overall fund balance, uh, we have, they put that in. Yeah, I put that in the uh, right there, we pulled it. So if you're wondering what our fund balance is in fund eighty, uh, and that's after all bills paid by Marvin Johnson and what we did with the weight room, et cetera. Any initial thoughts?
So there's, there's two sizes here. What is, what is the preference that they're looking for?
Uh, I think if we're gonna do it, let's do it right. And I I think more of the the twenty-six. Um, and again, just understanding that we've uh made, the district has made a a quality investment in our childcare. I think Beth Davis has done a fantastic job of building that up. Um, the number of kids that we get is not gonna go down, even my legislative meeting last uh week was childcare. How many districts, and you know, you don't make money. You basically, it's it's an even, um, but it's a, it's it's a service that you provide. And there's a variety of other districts that are starting to go down the same. We were one of the very few who sit in that room that actually offer birth to three. And so um again, I think we just need to make sure that we offer some of the the tools to best program. Um, but then Jamie can use this uh for instructional areas. If you've been down there, it's a, it's a waste of space. Um, it, the the drain off, or the drainage, um, just it it's muddy, that type of thing. So I think we can, it's kind of our playground discussion happening and where it's, it's using space to our advantage. And then we're not killing grass. It looks bad. It just.
I think when you say that, that we don't make anything out of it, I I would disagree. Because if we can get people to come here from birth to three, the chances of them staying when they see our facility is much higher.
Absolutely.
I think it's an investment in our future and I think it's a great idea.
No, and I would agree. It's 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 not. From a financial line, Tony's right. I mean, there is an investment side of it, but um again, I think if we didn't have the numbers that we have uh with best program, you know, we would be having this discussion, but this is multifaceted, so.
All right. So I'll entertain approval of the GCE and childcare facility upgrade, as presented.
So all you're basically doing is just saying, yep, we agree with that thumbs up, go get the quotes. So I'll bring the quotes back to you, but I just wanna make sure that you guys are good with the concept of spending funding monies to move forward. Okay.
So, here, do they have a second?
My second.
We've got Sally going to take the year first. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. Motion carried. Next is the approval of G C S D summer food service.
So this is another opportunity that this administration talked about and uh unfortunately, we haven't been doing this. So we think that it's a great change that can, we can offer our community and families. Um, I come from a district that we offer this and you would be amazed how many kids take advantage of these um opportunities to just get food and benefits. Um, through this program, the the number one setting is with Tori and the school nutrition team. Um, it offers a couple of positives. Number one, first and foremost, it offers food for our kids. Anybody eighteen or under can come to the school and get a quality meal, whether it's breakfast or lunch. The second part of this is it's funding through programs. Now, again, my discussion of the federal level could um sway that a little bit, but uh this offers uh some hours for some of our part-time or, say, seasonal workers in terms of our food services. If they're looking for more hours, more compensation, they can come in. Uh, we don't know what type of numbers we're looking at just yet, so we're gonna, the recommendation is to start small with summer school. Um, but compare it up with uh breakfast, uh, insane always like tops. So kids are working out, they're coming through, all they have to do is mark down their name. That's it, maybe a few. It it's a program in 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 as an administration team, but it does take time, it takes effort, it takes facilities, it takes a lot of those things. So looking for board approval, um, we did uh probably three months ago when I first uh saw it. I wanted to know what our percentage was and so um you can see the there that we do qualify based on a free reduced number. And so again, in in our eyes, this is a win for for everyone.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the summer, summer food service program, as presented.
Move.
Motion's made by Chuck, does a second?
Second.
Second by Steve. Any further discussion? Hearing not all, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. Motion carried. And um, next is the approval of twenty-four, twenty-five G C S D in the performance survey and process.
So this is a extension of our initial discussion tonight, um, looking for, uh, basically, when you look at these questions, um, this is kind of years of making some changes so that the survey is twenty minutes long. Um, looking at the board for feedback in terms of, is there any question that you will um don't agree with? Is there any question that was not included that you think we should find out? Um, the purpose is really to garner a baseline, garner a baseline with students uh about um and staff and community about myself, about the board of education, about administration, about what we're offering, where we wanna go when it comes to our strategic plan. I don't like to use Google because there's a lot of people that don't trust Google and rightly so. If you use Google Forms, there are ways to manipulate and see who does what. Looking for an anonymous survey, especially to do the starting point, we would use Survey Monkey. Um, and then we would also offer a paper copy. All paper copies would be then turned into me and then I would input that into the overall and then I would bring it to the board um in terms of what that looks like. Um, I have examples of past performance and it just simply is data. The data is drive, it's data that drives any one of our strategic um discussions. And whether it's operating referendum, things like that. So I wanted final approval from the board to see if we're on board with these questions or if they want changes. What, what changes would you like to see?
Are you ready to include a small area for comments?
Yeah, that's your second?
Yes.
Okay, so if you look at um at the very bottom, um, you know, if you look at these, let's just go through it, general questions, we categorize where where you are located. And then the Likert scale is based on the strategic pillars that we talked about, so students, staff, data, uh, facilities, technology. If you go into the Likert scale for district administration board, or, you know, that's where they they always have the option to comment in there. And then I compile those and put them in. So again, when you're talking about strengths. And then at the very bottom, we talked about, you know, again, operating. Um, I usually put in the final question is, is there anything that we didn't ask that you want us to be aware of? And that is usually my last question and that, again, opens everything up. So um with Survey Monkey, you get to do the Likert scale, but then you always have the comment.
Sure.
Option.
Perfect.
Which are very uh, very helpful, I hope.
You'll look down.
Yeah, true.
I had totally admin today. I said, uh, when I did this before, I, I mean, I've had principals really push back. Like, well, I don't wanna hear these negative comments. And well, that's that's just part of the game. You know, you have to be open because those are things that, if you're truly uh somebody that reflects on what you do, um, even those negative comments should open your eyes to say, well, there's at least people out there that think you're doing this. I have really grown as a, as a superintendent based on this performance, just um performance surveys, just because it it makes me aware of things that are important to other people that I didn't think, you know, otherwise. So again, wanted the board to give their final stamp of approval if there's anything that I'm missing in terms of questions. And this is a release survey, so if you know what to change here. I think, again, to Carrie's point, you can sit here and say, I have this plan, we have this, you know, this is our goal, this is our mission, but what, where is the accountability? You know, where where is the the teeth to what you're saying and how are you gonna follow through, giving the option to have a voice? And that's what this does. So with that, I'm just looking for approval of the questions and then I will take care of it from there.
Does anybody have any changes or differences or concerns? If anybody want to make a motion to approve the performance survey and process?
Move.
Is this by Steve? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Carrie. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. Motion carried. Um, I do not have any qualifications this evening online as our schedule of meetings. Um, when are we coming doing our, when do we do the?
Canvas?
Canvas?
We gotta figure it out whenever you guys wanna do it.
So yeah, as you know, the election is coming up, so um we have four individuals running for three spots. And so the next meeting will have new, just based on where the meeting lies. So that's why, again, I'm just saying thank you to Carrie and Sally, as oh, this will be their time of ending.
Okay, uh, there's a joint, April third is the joint pack for the day, six thirty, that's April third, it's in Turtle Lake. There's a registration, six thirty dinner, and there's presenter at seven fifteen. So if anybody's interested to contact you or Krista?
Contact me because I will go with you.
What is it?
So um if you click on the link, that's basically, it's a, the joint pack is where.
I don't see a link.
I don't see that.
No link.
There's no link. There's the agenda right there. So basically, uh, you go to Turtle Lake, if you haven't been there, um, we go to the C C S A um building and then that's the outline. So there's a dinner, there's a presenter. Joe was the superintendent in uh Fall Creek. He made himself known as a Twitter commenter, he was a superintendent. Um, I, it's it's an interesting piece, but um there's always some takeaways from it. But I, if there's any board member that wants to go, then I will go with you um to attempt. So if you're interested, let me know.
Uh, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Open. Motion is made by Sally. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Carrie. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are here.
Is there anything that, uh, with the new setup that, uh, we missed? Anything that?
It's hard to see through uh. My watch is as large as me.
Talking like a fellow.
Fellow beater?